Welcome all. Thank you for joining us for the Fort Mill Town Council meeting for Monday, April the 8th. If you have a cellphone, please silence it so that we can give you our full attention. Thanks for braving the weather and getting here with your swimmies. That's a good thing. We will do the pledge of allegiance and an invocation before starting with our minutes. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for keeping us all safe and bringing us together this evening. Please give us the wisdom and the courage to do the things that are right in our roles as leaders for this community. Help us to serve all in your name, and for that we are grateful. Giving his name to praise. Amen. We do not have a lengthy agenda tonight, but every item is important, so we're looking forward to it, but we will stay on a steady clip. We have a crown in the house. Yay! We'll stay on a steady clip tonight because I hear there's a basketball game later. Alrighty. Council members, you have received the minutes of our March 25th council meeting. Do you have any changes, deletions, or additions?
I make a motion to accept.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Public comment pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill. Any resident may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comment sheet prior to the start of the meeting. Do we have anyone signed in?
No ma'am.
Alright. Thank you very much. We'll move then right into presentations. We're going to have presentation number one, Employee of the Quarter, presentation to Tina Fuller. Our town manager Davie Broom will handle that for us.
Thank you Mayor.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Tina Fuller, please join me up front. Mayor, members of council, just wanted to recognize Tina Fuller as our employee of the quarter. Last two things about Tina Fuller for high.
She's not sure about that.
As you know, in order to win this, she must be nominated from a coworker, and then we have a group that will read all of nominations and then make their recommendation as to who should win it. So for Tina, she was recommended, and I'd like to read two things here. I would like to nominate Tina Fuller because she is very hardworking, she always makes sure we are paid on time, and she pays the town vendors. Most people do not realize just how important her job is to the town. I appreciate all that she does and enjoy working with her on a daily basis. And then the second one, Tina may not be out for taking the town, fighting fires, or keeping our water flowing, but she makes sure our paychecks hit the bank on time so that we can provide for our families. So I think you can see what's important to our family. Tina has been with us for almost 20 years, and she is much more than just our person that pays our checks. She has actually, for 20 years, been my safety net when it comes to accounts payable issues. She is always willing to stop whatever she's doing for anyone, whoever walks through her door, to ask a question about any type of issue when it comes to accounts payable, accounts receivable. She stops what she's doing and immediately helps. And at times, that puts her in a bind, but she catches back up and she does not. She keeps on trucking. So we're very, very proud of her, and I appreciate her more than I can express tonight. But you know, I would say if we, as a town, offered a employee of the decade, she would probably give my vote. With that, I'd like to award you this present.
And Tina, I would like to add that every time I've come to Town Hall, you're there. And when you're there, you're always smiling, and you're always upbeat and positive, and that is such a wonderful attribute to have. Thank you for doing that for all of us. Alrighty then. I like happy stuff. Another happy thing. Presentation number two, Strawberry Festival, pre-event informational presentation. Our very own Caroline Hasty.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. It's good to see you.
Good evening. This is Alyssa Alakwa.
Hello. She was our queen two years ago, but the strawberry queen is always a strawberry queen, always on duty when necessary. So thank you for being here.
Yeah, of course. I'm so happy to be back.
Thank you. Yes. The South Carolina Strawberry Festival, we're celebrating 10 years this year, and I was honored to win this job five years ago to keep the tradition. Brown came after me with this opportunity, one I couldn't pass up. So I'm very fond of this event. It's very near and dear. It begins on May 15th, and it continues in my brain until the following year, the first weekend. So I'm pretty excited about this year. It's 10 years, and we've got a lot to celebrate. I wanted to go ahead and share with you, our theme this year is how sweet it is. This festival is sweet. It's everything about it, our hospitality, the way we're presenting ourself in every way. And from the pig races, you couldn't get more cuter than that. And then we've got our beautiful strawberry queens, the golf tournament, the pancake breakfast, those things. New this year, we, let me back up, I'm sorry. The first event begins on April 26th with the strawberry jam, I mean with the pageant. And we're pretty excited about the pageant. We will be bringing back all of our queens. For 10 years, we've had strawberry queens. So day one, first festival, we had a strawberry queen. All these ladies will be coming back and on the stage, and we'll get to see them, and they'll get to meet in great photo opportunities. The Tuesday following that, the Tuesday before the festival, we will have the golf tournament, again, will be held at Springfield. It's a great relationship that has been building with Springfield. We are almost today, we're at 2017s, or you know, so we're doing pretty good. I'm pretty happy, and we still have folks that are calling. I just talked to the golf director right before coming onboard. So Bojangles will be one of our sponsors for that, as well as, you know, Comer, Coca-Cola, and Subway. The following event, that Wednesday, this is our first year hosting with a collaboration with the Downtown Merchants, and it is our Strawberry Jam. So it's the Main Street Strawberry Jam event, will be held on May 1st, and it's a three-hour event, and it basically is to take that spot leading up to the festival to make it really community. And one of the things that we found through my five years being here is that folks really enjoyed that community aspect. They just wanted something for the community. So this is a trial event. We're going to see how it goes, and if it's shaping up to be, if it ends up what it's shaping up to be right now, we're going to be in for a great event. The Pancake Breakfast always starts the event on Saturday morning of the festival. It's off-site, that's why you'll see a separate advertisement, is that it will be held at Nation Ford High School. The next item is, what do we have in the Q box next? Thank you. This festival poster, this brochure, it mind-boggled me how exciting folks were to get this map, and how excited they were to be on this map. We give out over 20,000 of these maps, and vendors, as you can see, are growing constantly. I wanted to touch base, we've got some exciting new sponsors this year. Cabela's is coming in as a sponsor, as well as an event sponsor. Not only are they given a monetary gift, but they're also bringing out two 70-gallon fish tanks. So folks can go fishing, and so it's lots of fun and something unexpected. This year, Metrolina Golf Carts is coming in, and they're donating all their golf carts. They want folks to try the golf carts. So we've got, Pucker Butts is our second headline sponsor. That is a pretty awesome opportunity for us to have a Downtown Merchant who wants to be in the thick of it. So with Piedmont Medical Center, this is their 10th year sponsoring our festival. And that's pretty encouraging, you know, to be a, you know, a presenting sponsor, and we're very honored to have them. As you can see, we have 175 vendors. That includes 148 arts crafts business vendors, and the rest are food vendors. With that, we've got the Dixielane Car Show, and Piedmont Medical Hospital will have a Community Built on Heroes exhibit. The Butterfly exhibit came to us five years ago when I came onboard, and that has remained a steady, exciting event for our community. Everybody enjoys that. Let's see, the State Guard will be out this year doing some presentation of their equipment and just showing off what they've got. Last year, the car show had 115 entries. They're expecting 189 this year, so we'll see. It's pretty exciting. Then, of course, the festival always ends with our showdown of music, and we're pretty excited with it being our 10th anniversary. I saved some money over to the side so I could end this festival literally with a pow. And so Friday night, we're going to start with a local band, then we'll go into beach bands, and variety groups, and dancing Saturday morning, and of course, who else's birthday is it that day? It's Barry B. Good's birthday. He'll be turning 10. We will be having a birthday party for him in front of the bandstand, sorry, in front of the main stage, and Barry will be having, all of his mascot buddies will be joining him. So we'll have the likes of Chant from the NASCAR Hall of Fame, to, you know, Daniel the Spaniel. So we have Carolina represented from different businesses and groups coming to Barry's birthday party. The Peach Stand will be donating 400 cupcakes, and the children of Fort Mill will be singing to Barry. So that night, that afternoon, Matt Tucker will come onboard, and he'll be celebrating our veterans, and by having a veterans tribute. We have several booths that are manned by veterans. Veterans of Foreign Wars will be here, American Legion, Reeds Across America, and Rolling Thunder. All of those folks will be in attendance at the festival, so we thought this would be a great opportunity to have a tribute to those veterans. Sonic Rewind is a local group who will be performing that afternoon. Fort Mill Church of God will be doing a Christian aspect of it, and then we will go into a rockin' night of tributes. When I say a rockin' night of tributes, it's going to be crazy. We're going to have a great time with beginning of, we will have the, sorry, we're going to have Trial by Fire. It's a Journey tribute. They've been at our festival before. Every year, I have a request for Trial by Fire, so I'm pretty excited about the Journey tribute coming. We will also have, the other group will be an REO Speedwagon Survivor tribute. So I'm pretty excited about that because we will end the night with a group that's flying in from Los Angeles to play specifically for us, and that's called The Living on a Prayer, a Jon Bon Jovi tribute. So we've got a pretty wild and exciting event planned for the community and for visitors and guests for this festival. And of course, we always end our evening with Comporium's fireworks showcase. So a lot of things, some of the things that we have, we will have three lines, three travel lines, orange line, a blue line, and a red line, traveling buses to and from. We will have those better designated. Every year's a learning year, right? So that's one thing that we wanted to really perfect this year, and it was one of the things that we needed to hone in and take more communication and get that into the community. And so these, the orange line coming from downtown, these will all be posted on the website. The blue line will be from Fort Mill High School, and the red line from Nation Ford High School. And those buses will be constantly moving to and from. We have several handicap parking locations, and all of that will be posted on the website to actually send people that way, and there'll be signage on, at the festival and along the streets as well. So that's pretty much the festival in a nutshell. I could talk festival all day, but you know, I don't want to do that to you.
Any questions for Caroline?
Are we going to do wristbands again for the rides?
We will on Friday night. We certainly will. Yes, sir.
How much will those be?
I'm sorry. You know, please look on the website. I don't have all those prices on top of my head. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
The website is scstrawberryfestival.com.
I think it's important to note that while this definitely consumes Caroline's entire year, and most everybody thinks that this is a small get-together, it is not. It is a lot of work. It is not work that goes unnoticed. Our thanks to all staff that pull in and work hard to support this community festival. Wouldn't be able to do it without the town employees, but would also like to give special attention to those folks that have been sponsors throughout the 10 years. Piedmont has been a loyal supporter of our event, and wonderful to have. Comporium founders, York Electric, Carolina Ale House got here as soon as they could, Duke Energy, Subway Hobos, US Foods, Carolina Eye, Nose, and Throat, Positive Printers, Balloon Express, the Hampton Inn, Metrolina Golf Carts, York Natural Gas, York County Natural Gas, Fun Outdoor Sales, Fort Mill Sun, Paradise Home Improvement, Pucker Butt Pepper Company, and Bojangles, to name a few. These are folks that deserve a lot of praise and gratitude because they enable us to put on the great festival that has food and fun and great music in our community annually. So thank you to each one of the folks that work so hard to partner with us in putting on this festival each year. Any additional questions?
I have one, Caroline. What is the time for the Wednesday, the Strawberry Jam?
It'll be, the event itself will be from 6:00 to 9:00 PM.
6:00 to 9:00.
Yes, ma'am. Fun E-Biz will be performing in the bandstand.
And with that, if you will stay in place, our next item on the agenda is a proclamation. "We are going to, whereas in its 10th year, the South Carolina Strawberry Festival continues to showcase the town of Fort Mill by providing a venue where residents and visitors can come together in a fun, safe, and friendly atmosphere. The festival seeks to promote tourism, encourage economic development, enhance the quality of life, and foster a greater sense of pride in the Fort Mill community. And whereas a positive, family-friendly atmosphere is the cornerstone of a successful community event, the South Carolina Strawberry Festival is dedicated to providing a safe, fun, and affordable experience for residents and visitors of all ages and backgrounds. And whereas highlighting our community's greatest assets as the strawberry, I have to, South Carolina Strawberry Festival continues to grow and mature, it has retained its local flavor, no pun intended. And whereas the South Carolina Strawberry Festival continues to pride itself on southern hospitality. And whereas the South Carolina Strawberry Festival depends and is proud of its strong partnerships with local residents and business and community organizations to offer events and acts that appeal to diverse interests and demographics. And whereas by bringing an average attendance of 60,000 people into Fort Mill during the Strawberry Festival, it has increased foot traffic, sponsorship opportunities, exposure to the potential customers, and free advertising to participating businesses and organizations. And whereas in 2018, this festival successfully brought $90,000 back into our community through nonprofits, through parking, vending, pancakes, pageantry, car shows, and wrestling." That's amazing. That is just incredible. It pays itself back. "Whereas this event has been awarded South Carolina Event of the Year for two consecutive years, and Best Poster in North Carolina and South Carolina Festivals for two consecutive years. This event has also been recognized and featured in Business Week Magazine, Family Fun Magazine, Carolina Hometown Cookbook, and Family Circle Magazine." Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Gwen Savage, on behalf of the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, do hereby recognize April 26, 2019, to May 4, 2019, as South Carolina Strawberry Festival week. Caroline, I'd like to give you the proclamation.
I'll come, please do. Mayor Savage, I'm going to college.
Are you going to college?
I am. I'm going to George Washington.
Are you? I've been there. It's gorgeous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Where are you going later?
Environmental policy.
Strawberries?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's impressive.
Hi, how are you?
Doing fine. It's worth a little meeting, but I just wanted to see if I could, you know, get some info on that right here.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm so happy for you. It's great to see you. Good job.
Sure. Could you, who's that?
Mayor, if this is okay, I would like to, at this moment, I would like at this moment to present Alyssa. You can stay here, baby.
Okay.
Debbie, Debbie Wizard is our local artist, and she owns a store on Main Street called Olive.
Look at the duck boots. They're so cute.
It's been a rainy day. We had a really nice presentation set, and, but we decided due to the rain that we would come back off that just to be in safety.
You're doing unveiling?
Yes. We are going to be doing the official unveiling of this year's South Carolina Strawberry Festival poster.
For those that don't know, Debbie is such a gifted artist, and we're so blessed to have her give us the talent that she provides to make our Strawberry Festival just really something unique. All of the banners on Main Street are replicas of Debbie's last year's poster.
Oh, it has a bee. Beautiful.
And the people. I like having the people.
Yeah, I thought of making all about the people and this festival itself this year.
We're so blessed to have you, Debbie.
Well, thank you. I'm happy to be here.
It's been an honor to work with Debbie, and Mayor, I believe that you saw her painting two years ago, and said, "Why isn't it being seen?" And that struck a new opportunity for art being displayed.
It's very classic. Very, very classic. Beautiful.
There's many stories within this poster, but we'll have that opportunity to send that out soon.
Sure, sure, sure. Debbie, thank you. Thank you for everything you do for the town of Fort Mill.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
In the past, we've had posters that you could purchase here. Are we going to do that again?
We'll ask. Caroline, we have a good question from Councilwoman Hemsaw. Are we going to be able to buy posters of Debbie's latest creation?
Yes, ma'am. After tonight, tomorrow, it will be going to Positive Printers. They're another sponsor, and they will be printing those, and I will make sure you all have one.
Okay. I know the last couple of years, we haven't had posters, or I don't think that we have.
We keep selling them out. Since Debbie has taken over as our artist for the festival, we keep having reprints. She does keep some in her studio as well, but just let me know, and I'll make sure there's some saved for you.
I do think it's important to note, too, like with the Strawberry Festival, our queens have causes that they work for, and they work to bring to the forefront of our ability to try to help with them. So every aspect of the Strawberry Festival has something attached to it that's probably deeper and larger than you might know. So we look forward to a dry event.
Thank you.
Maybe, oh, please.
Thank you.
And very excited by everything. I've seen a lot of positive comments about the bands this year.
Yes.
So looking forward to having a wonderful event, very shortcoming.
Thank you. And everything, we're updating the website constantly at scstrawberryfestival.com.
And a healthy strawberry crop. We hope no more snow in April.
Yes. I did get an update before I came from Ron Edwards with Peach, with Springs Farms, and he said that they were uncovered last week, so everything is just fine in their own go.
That's great. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
And Mayor, before we leave the topic, I would also like to express our appreciation. Caroline puts forth a lot of effort into this event all throughout the year, and she does that in conjunction and in tune with our staff, public safety, public works, parks and recreation. And it goes without saying, the partnership we have with Springs Farms, the Strawberries, the Fort Mill School District, the busing, it's, it all, it's all a teamwork effort, and we are looking forward to this year.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's a little bit like family, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Everybody has to pull their fair share. So thank you all. We appreciate that update and look forward to it. Old business items. There are no old business items on our agenda for this evening, so we will move to the new business item number one, First Reading and Public Hearing, An Ordinance Amending the Mixed Use Concept Plan and Development Conditions for the Rutledge MXU Project, consisting of York County Tax Map Number 02021, 01330, and 331, and 332, containing approximately 49.2 point, 49.298 plus or minus acres located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Springfield Parkway and US 21 Bypass. This is in Councilmember Helms's district, and he is out of town this evening, and our subject matter expert is Chris Pettit. We will open the public hearing at this point. Does anyone have anything for the public hearing?
Just across the street from Captain Steve's. Right.
Okay. Hearing nothing. We will close the public hearing, and we will move to the first reading. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number one.
I have a motion to accept, and a second. Mr. Pettit, do you have anything you'd like to share with us before we make a vote?
Just a brief summary of the request, Mayor. This was relatively, she was originally approved in 2014 and amended in 2017. That amended version allowed for up to 245 dwelling units, a minimum of 50,000 square feet, and a maximum of 175,000 square feet of commercial use. And the proposed amendment that is before you this evening would amend the maximum number of dwelling units from 245 down to 200. It also restricts the types of units to just single-family, detached, or townhomes. And it would also amend the overall minimum square footage for commercial down from 50,000 to 20,000 square feet, and amend the maximum from 175 to 50,000 square feet. So it's a reduction in residential and commercial density.
Always happy to hear. Smaller amount. Any questions for Mr. Pettit?
Why the reduced number?
Just their business point?
I can't necessarily speak to that. I think the residential piece is probably about yield of what could be yield on the site, and in conjunction with the commercial, I assume probably from a market perspective, but again, I can't necessarily speak for the applicant.
Is this the same developer?
That came to us originally. It is not.
Are you here with the development?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to speak?
Yes, ma'am. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Please announce yourself.
My name is Bill Mosley. I am from Charlotte, North Carolina, and with Mosley Real Estate Advisors. The development's actually going to be split into two different sections. We've got the commercial developer, which my company is handling.
Could you speak up?
I'm sorry. We have the commercial development, which my company is going to be handling, and then we have the residential development that Mayor Taj John Littner is going to be handling. Originally, I think it was Crosland was going to be doing the development. They weren't able to perform, and then the family decided to go a different route, and that's why we're here. As far as the reason it's a different square footage, I think really the, and the residential guys can talk about that, but I think originally it was planned for multifamily, which is a much smaller footprint. They had hoped to get more commercial on the site. I don't think commercials really is viable at that intersection, so the commercial reduced. They were able to go to single-family, get a little less density on there, and then it just, it just worked out that way. So that's what the size has worked out to be.
Any questions?
We're not looking at another QT over there, are we?
No, sir.
What type of commercial hypothetically?
Well, I mean, we're proposing a CVS, sir. CVS pharmacy.
Okay. And how many acres will your natural green area be?
I'm going to let the residential guys talk about how many acres for the ballparkish green area.
Was this not in our materials?
And it's all approximate because we still, some of our survey data's not completely in yet, so everything's an approximation.
There's certain amounts, probably 15 acres.
About 15 acres.
And again, you know, originally, this property was brought, our plan for this property was brought to us. especially if it's going in the right direction.
And Mayor, the, excuse me, the reason I had asked that question is because we ran into this with another development.
Yes, we did.
And, um, they changed developers, and they totally changed the concept completely.
We fixed that. Yes. Yes, and and what Councilwoman Heemsaw is referencing is previously, we didn't have as many safety nets and, uh, we didn't have everything in place that allowed us to enforce, uh, the will of the council as it moved from developer to developer. We do now, and we're much happier with the process, so happy to have you here this evening.
Thank you. And we ran, just so you all know, CVS was always part of the development. We were working with Crosland on the back end. My company was only to develop the CVS. When they fell through, we're actually doing the complete commercial development now for the for the family and for CVS. So our role has kind of expanded a little bit, but we've been involved since, I don't know, 18, 17?
Seventeen. Mm-hmm. Any further questions?
Traffic study, um, has one been done for this property yet? Is there still one to be done? Where do we stand?
The traffic study was completed in 2016, uh, which contemplated the 245 units and the the larger amount of commercial square footage. Um, so a study was completed and approved, and at this point, we are revisiting that study to revise it based off of the new concept, uh, and that is still underway.
Okay. Thank you.
We have any information about trip counts back then handy or no?
The the study was completed and approved. I don't have the the full counts, and it had a number of improvements that would have been required, and so certainly this this study that that's coming back would certainly have a number of improvements.
Will it be ready by second reading, or do we know?
I don't know.
No, sir.
It's a smaller amount, so.
I know, but it would be nice to have it available before we vote on it. That's my two cents.
Well, it may or may not, um, but it goes before the planning commission, before it comes to us, and it's a smaller amount, therefore less disruption. So it would stand to be yes that the traffic study that was done based on a larger number, and it was approved, would not be much of a problem with a smaller amount. Okay. Thank you, sir. We certainly appreciate you being with us.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry I wasn't as exciting as the strawberry festival. That sounds like it.
Yeah, you didn't come bearing red berry. But you can be a sponsor next year, so.
Yeah, we we'll be happy to have you sponsor something next year. All right. Any further questions? Hearing none. We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
All right, I've got two nays and three ayes. Okay. New business item number two, approval needed to award the lowest bidding company for the classification and compensation study that was approved in the 2018-2019 budget. We have Phillip A. Cott and Debbie Harden. Here is our, uh, our experts on this. I need a motion to open.
I make a motion to accept new business item number two.
Okay.
Suck it.
I have a motion to accept and a second. Hi.
Hello.
Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Um, we're here with the classification and compensation study, um, plan, the RFQ that we had put out. This is a budgeted item. That wasn't our audit, our our budget. It was for $35,000. That was budgeted for that item. Um, you may have a packet in front of you. You should. And this information, it's actually going to walk you through a timeline that we have starting on February 26, when all of those bids were opened, um, and in an open build, um, presentation. We've also followed that with the phases of the completion with the company that is, um, has been our choice going through the process. We've done interviews, we've gone through, done research, references. Um, you'll notice also the very last sheet is the, those are the prices, the bids that came in from the different companies at that sealed opening. Um, the company that we're looking at is Chondrian Associates. That's the one that, um, actually 34,500. They've met all of the specs, um, going through all of the detailed information that we put through in that RFQ. They've actually hit all of those and checked all those boxes. Um, and I'll let Debbie speak when it comes to the HR side of that.
Okay.
And we're excited to be able to to move forward with the compensation and classification study, and, um, ours was, the last one we had done was in 2013, and, uh, we've grown a lot since then, and, uh, just needed to revise and update our study. So they'll come in and do, um, updated job description and give us a plan and information to bring back to you guys and actually meet with you in the, at the end.
Wonderful, wonderful. This is, uh, one of the steps forward we have been wanting to take, is to ensure that we are doing our best for our employees that do the best for us.
Thank you.
So we're very happy about that. Any questions for Debbie or Phil?
It's a need.
It is a need. It is a great need, and I'm very pleased.
Are you both comfortable with the selection that you chose?
Extremely, extremely. We've gone through and many references, many references going through and and interviews, actually, with the companies also.
Where are they located?
This company is actually out of Georgia.
In Georgia.
They are.
Okay. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion that's on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. Thank you both. We greatly appreciate you every day.
Thank you.
All right. There are no information discussion items. Uh, there is a committee report, committee report number one of the ad hoc appointments, committee consideration of appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals, three, historic review board, four, and planning commission, three. Chris Pettit will walk us through that. Do we need to motion that to open it, since it's a committee report?
Uh, Mayor.
We will, we will have to motion it to approve it. Got it. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
All right, Mayor. Um, the committee, as you mentioned, met last week to review applications for those boards, and they've provided the the following recommendations, and I'll just briefly go through those. Uh, for the Board of Zoning Appeals, C3 recommend reappointing Jody Stegall to a new three-year term expiring 4/12/2022. Seat four recommend appointing Carolyn Blair to a three-year term at the same dates, and seat five recommend reappointing Becky Campbell to a new three-year term, same dates. Historic review board, uh, we have four spots there. For seat three, recommend appointing Scott Kokenhauer to a three-year term with those same dates previously mentioned. Seat four recommend appointing Carmen Banks to a three-year term, same dates. Seat five recommend appointing Megan Brenton, I apologize if I misspoke, uh, mispronounced that, to a three-year term, and seat seven recommend appointing Samantha Niffling to actually serve the remainder of an existing term for seat seven. So that one is going to be slightly different, but the term expiring, uh, 4/24/2020. And finally, for the planning commission, the recommendations were for seat three to recommend appointing Andy Avril to a three-year term beginning 4/12/2019, expiring 4/12/2022. Seat four recommend reappointing Tom Petty to a three-year term, same dates, and seat five recommend reappointing Ben Hudgens to a three-year term, same dates.
Everybody get that? I think it's important to note that over the course of the time I've served on council, we worked very hard to make this more process-driven. Uh, we do have, anyone that's interested in serving in a voluntary position can go on the town website, fill out a form. It will ask you all the pertinent information about your interest, uh, where you live. We have a hearty number of people that, um, offer to do these often thankless jobs that many people don't see, uh, but they do it, and they do it well. We do look at attendance. We do look at moving people from committee to committee to build the experience level of those that are working to help make those decisions before they come here, and I'm greatly appreciative of that effort. Larry, Ronnie, and myself sit on that committee, and, um, I'm very happy with the process that we are moving more rapidly towards. So I need a motion to approve the committees or disprove. I need a motion on the the committee's recommendations.
I make a motion to accept the recommendations by the committee to appoint said names to said committee heads.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a lot of seconds, and we have a very nicely worded motion.
And what the mayor's kind of say one thing, all these people give their time.
For nothing.
For nothing. The planning commission sits here, and they hammer out sidewalks and setbacks and all kinds of stuff, and so.
Absolutely.
Just thank, for those of you who don't understand that, they give their time. It's a lot of hours. Those planning commission meetings can be hours long. I can ride, I'll come to the gym at 9:30 at night sometimes, and they'll be sitting in here for at least three hours sometimes. So thank everybody that serves on all our volunteer boards. It's a tremendous help to our town.
Absolutely, and I I think it's it's duly noted that they don't get paid. They do it for the honor to serve their community. So thank you to all our volunteers, and we greatly appreciate it. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. It's a unanimous decision. We do have two executive session items this evening that will be of short duration. Executive session item number one, receipt of legal advice regarding a potential claim or lawsuit. And executive session item number two, discussions incident to propose contractual arrangements relating to the sale and purchase of real property. Do I have a motion to move to executive session?
Make a motion.
Second.
Make a motion. A second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Please make note that we do not vote in executive session. Uh, we will come back to regular session and take any action that's deemed necessary. Thanks so much. I need a motion to return to regular session. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I made a motion to return to regular session.
Second.
You have, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Let the record reflect that no vote was taken in executive session on either item or any other item. Um, seeing that that's the end of our written agenda, Mr. Huntley, what do you have for the good of the whole?
I have three things. I was sitting in the back of the room there, that young gentleman who's studying to be, I mean, working toward being an Eagle Scout. I understand that's his younger sister with him.
And what's your name?
Alex.
Alex? How close are you? Are you working on the process? You getting pretty close?
Yeah. Still a little.
That's quite admirable. Our hats off to you. Thank you for joining us tonight. Let us know what we can do to help. Okay?
And, uh, one more, cut, two more, two more things.
It's late night, huh?
There's nothing any more wonderful than giving the gift of life. A member of our staff's wife gave a kidney to her friend, uh, Brown Simpson's wife.
I just heard about that.
And saved her life. And I understand everything going real well. And the concert choir at Nation Ford High School sang at Carnegie Hall this weekend. And the reason I know about that is because my grandson is in the choir. But, uh, that was a very, I'm sure that'd be the high point of their life.
That's amazing, totally amazing. We have some wonderful students in this town.
We've been to a couple concerts and things at at both high schools, and it's just amazing. I cannot believe, I can't remember, believe they can remember that much stuff.
Crazy, isn't it?
But this this guy was was lost in, uh, New York City, and he was wandering around. He was looking for Carnegie Hall, and he asked this, uh, New Yorker, said, how'd I get to Carnegie Hall? And the guy said, practice, man, practice. Did I say it?
Thank you, Mr. Huntley.
Carnegie Hall's beautiful. I don't know if you all have ever been there or not. It's stunning.
Mr. Shary, what's your?
Uh, just keep up the good work there, buddy. Uh, getting your Eagle Scout, that's one of the awards that you can get as a young man and carry it through and put it on your resume when you're out looking for work. That carries some weight behind it.
Yes, it does.
So keep it up. Um, I just want to say thanks to all the the cleanup crew and the guys out there with the town making, keeping up with all the yard debris and other, especially in my neighborhood, people are going bananas, taking down trees and cutting grass and leaves and pruning, and, uh, they've been spot on, keeping everything all cleaned up and the roads clear and and, uh, my little neighborhood, whoever swept out the gutters before the rain came in, I want to say thank you to him. Uh, I'll find out who that was. That was very nice.
Yeah, I think we need to give him a citizen award for doing that.
Yeah, that was, that was not known. That's all.
Great. Lisa?
I'm pretty quiet tonight. I will say both my brother and my dad and my godfather are all Eagle Scouts. My brother made a career out of, um, being a Boy Scout, so he's now one of the regional directors there. So you could continue to take that in many different directions for your career. So congratulations, and thank you for joining us. So other than that, I'm great.
Absolutely. Ms. Trudy?
I think I'm good. Thank you.
Everybody's quiet tonight. What's going on?
I know.
Can I?
Yes, please. Ms. Moody?
Councilman Moody has the floor.
I'm here. Now, um, it's kind of, um, a little sad, the janitor at my job, she always sang gospel songs, and, um, she just started a few months ago, and I saw her on Wednesday, and then she died that night, and she was with a contract company, so no one really knows much about her or, um, well, we were all kind of sad at office, you know, about that, but she